Okay, good evening, good afternoon, welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Monday, November 1st, 2021. I would note that we have council members Brent and Goodell joining us via Zoom this afternoon. And the rest of the council members are here in person. Okay, first on the, I guess, we'll go through the consent agenda. Are there any items on page one that any council member would like to discuss or ask questions about?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, on A6 for the council, city council policies and procedures. Let me open that up again. Yeah, I thought there was an opportunity in there at number 18, which is, sorry, I'm scrolling, contacting councils all the way at the end on the last page. It talks about how the public can reach out to council phone or email. It gives a phone number. I thought, you know, we talk about accountability a lot, and I thought we had an opportunity here to put something about responding within 48 hours or just kind of setting some kind of benchmark in response. Didn't know how you guys felt about that, but I just thought this might be a good place to to add in some, you know, closing the loop, if you will, when people reach out, what they can expect in return.
Okay. Anyone, anyone have any thoughts on that?
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I guess my question is, have we had feedback that indicates that that is something that is necessary? I mean, I understand the benchmark aspect, but have we had feedback that we're not responding in a timely manner?
I don't know that we've had that externally, but I know sometimes internally, when questions come, the mayor will ask, you know, has someone responded to this yet? Or sometimes it's a bit of a grab bag. So some way to maybe organize it if we're not contacted directly with some kind of, at least somebody will get back to them. I don't know if, you know, it's Rachel who coordinates, you know, we got this response, who's taking it or whatever. But, you know, Steve, I haven't heard of any external complaints, but I've just noticed some things internally. And I thought maybe this would give us a system or council a system for people knowing who responded and, you know, that kind of thing.
You're suggesting 48 hours?
Just to even just be like, hey, we got your email, just some kind of touch point. But, you know, some, some kind of touch point, hey, we've got this or hey, we've handed this off to the engineer because, you know, we don't know, or I don't know, I'm just, I just, when I flipped through this, I know we looked at it a year or two ago, and I just saw this one again and have thought of some of our internal texts sometimes when, you know, the mayor just wants to make sure everybody's been heard or everybody's gotten a response. Sometimes we have some stragglers out there.
Yeah, personally, I have no issue with that. I mean, I've always tried to do within 24, so 48 is reasonable unless somebody's on vacation or you hit that situation, but.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any issue with that.
Your Honor.
Oh, Will, go ahead.
Yes. My, my comment to that would be if we were to put something in there that says 48 hours or whatnot, maybe change it to two business days, because sometimes if it goes to the council, then Renee or Renee, then Rachel has to send it out to everybody. If it comes in on a Saturday or Friday night, she's off work till Monday and doesn't get sent out. And just maybe put it as business days in case something happens on a weekend where we can't, we don't get it until after 48 hours.
Great thought.
Yeah, Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
Just thinking about this, you know, the process that we're discussing here, is it also a feature of our email system for those incoming emails to council distribution that there is an automated response given to say that just what we were commenting on, that there would be a contact back within two business days?
Yeah, you can do that on your own personal email and then that way, or your work email that way. If it hits that, it'll come back to them, I'm pretty sure. But, but like for the distribution.
Wait, Mayor, Mayor, could you speak into the microphone? I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm not speaking.
This is Terrell, sorry.
It's Terrell.
Oh, Terrell, sorry.
Yeah, you can set it on your own city email, your out of office reply, but I'm not sure if it goes back to the, when they hit the distribution. You can test that to see if it is for sure. But when they're emailing you directly, then that would, that would apply.
Well, I, I guess I, I support two business days. I think there maybe are some other enhancements that are deeper than just what this policy would be in terms of making it streamlined for all of us. And I've been sensitive to sometimes when an incoming communication lapses and the mayor has to ask, you know, has somebody responded to this? And it's like, oh, gosh, you know, maybe we all missed it. So I, I think there are some other enhancements process wise that we can think about that go deeper than the, than the policy.
Okay, so where do we go from here with that? We add something?
Well, I can add the response within two business days. And just for the record, I only monitor the council at City of Marion inbox as well as website commission. So anything to your personal inbox, I do not have access to.
Okay, does anyone object to adding that? Okay. Anything else on A6 or any other item in the council policies and procedures?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Will.
Just to reiterate what the others were saying, that maybe, and maybe isn't something in this document, but it's the whole process. If something comes out to the whole council, that whole, the whole system needs to be updated and figured out how to make sure people are getting responded to. Obviously, if it comes just to Ward three and just to me, then I'm going to take care of it within the 48 hours or two business days. But if it goes to everybody, we need to make sure that there's some type of system in place. So I, I, I would like to see us make a recommendation to staff to try and figure out something, some type of system or some type of process for it. Not necessarily in this, this document, just.
Your Honor.
Does somebody want to submit suggestions or, oh, Renee, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Will is saying, because that was kind of my thought as well. Like sometimes something will come in and then I'll see a response and then it'll say, oh, I answered this. So I think one simple thing could just be, you know, maybe every council, council member should be CC'd on a response that comes to every council member so that, A, not only everybody can see it was taken care of, you know, oh, Will took care of that, I'm not going to respond. And B, we can also see how it was responded to. You know, I'm sure we would all be saying the same thing, but that could be helpful as well in case that person, you know, were to come to public comment or what have you. But I think just CCing other council members keeps everyone in the loop and is almost like a receipt that it was done. I don't know how you solve the problem of if it's a general inquiry that we all get, knowing who, you know, sometimes mayor, you'll reach out and ask someone specifically to handle it because it's in their ward, and that makes sense. But yeah, I think, you know, to what Grant was saying and Will, maybe there's a, a little bit bigger of a process that needs to happen. I don't know if it could all come under that umbrella, but I do see the need for kind of what they're getting at as well.
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead, Kara.
So I can see all the eyes turning my way, so I knew this is not surprise. But I, I think that's probably something that we need to look at really closely because if we set up a situation where everybody is emailing each other and maybe somebody responds and then somebody else responds, it could turn into something that looks like a discussion, even if it's not. And I want to make sure you're all insulated from any claims of an open record, or sorry, an open meetings violation, especially if it's going out to a member of the public as well. So I think that's something worth investigating further because I, I don't disagree that there needs to be something so that you know somebody's answered. But I think we just want to make sure we're really careful about how we do that so that you guys aren't getting attacked with $1,000 fines out of your own pockets.
Go ahead, Mel.
I would suggest if you're responding, CC Rachel, and she can make the group aware of the response, response and someone is taking that over.
Does that, does that sound reasonable?
I'll, I'll meet with legal and, and other staff and we'll, we'll figure out a process and I'll send it out to.
Yeah, will you send it out before Thursday and then we can?
I mean, I'll add the two days to this document, but I think the internal process of how we handle that doesn't necessarily need to be in this document.
Yeah, Steve.
I said, one thought I've got is so, so that you're not getting all seven involved on a email that is sent to everybody is for Rachel, it goes into her, is to send it out to the ward, wherever that individual lives has sent the email, send it to the city council member of that ward and then the two at large. Okay, and so between those three, they can obviously, I think, adequately respond and as well keep out of Kara's doghouse. So just, just an idea.
Okay. Under, under 11, I mean, first of all, I love this. I think this is just one more step we're taking to become more professional in how we do things. And I think that's really important for, for the public to see that. But under 11, I wonder if we need to expand that even further with regard to how discussion takes place. We had a perfect example last meeting where it was the business meeting and there was a discussion that went on for a long time between staff and council members. It really should have gone on between council members at that, at that, at that point, that kind of discussion takes place between council members and then you vote. You know, there's a lot of information gathering and whatnot, and that all discussion goes through the chair, all questions go through the chair. And you have to be recognized before you speak for, for order and for purposes of making sure everyone gets a fair chance to talk and no one is dominating the discussion. There's, I mean, I think there's, there's more we can do with 11 in terms of just the, the procedure for even just discussion in the council chambers.
I can add some statements to that, to that section. I took this from a document that I received through some training, so we can certainly add on to it.
Okay, so this came from another source?
This section, it's like a pamphlet on meetings, how to run a meeting, so I can add to it.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes the meetings are unnecessarily prolonged and it could become kind of inefficient because there's just sort of casual conversation going on back and forth. You get into a topic and then there's, it becomes this casual conversation between one council member and staff or between, you know, it, it, in the business meeting, which is the Thursday meeting, it needs to stay professional, it needs to stay orderly, and that all, all conversation goes through the person who's chairing the meeting, all questions go through the chair. You have to be recognized before you, you speak, and that way it maintains order and everyone gets a fair chance to speak. At that meeting, the discussion really between council, by council members, really is council members giving their opinion on a, on the topic at hand and trying to convince each other how they're, you know, of, of the benefits or the pros and cons of voting one way or another. That's where the, what the, most of the discussion should be at the business meeting, where the information gathering, the learning about the, the topic, the asking questions of the staff, all of that. I mean, I, I understand it's not always practical and sometimes you're going to have that, you know, last minute question or whatever, but that really should be done ahead of time. It should be done by, by, on Tuesday, before Thursday. It's just, I mean, I, I would add things to that effect, I, I think, unless anybody objects to that. Steve.
Yeah, I, I would have to say, I think for the most part, we do exactly what you just described. I think it's been a little more difficult with the Zoom meetings.
Sure.
Especially for you to be able to recognize who's out there, who wants to say something.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's added a level of difficulty, but I would have to say the majority of the time, when we're all up here, I think we follow that protocol pretty well.
I'm not being critical at all.
So, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying, is it, is it a good thing to, to memorialize it in our procedures?
Oh, that's fine.
I'm not being critical of what we've done. I think, you know, we've adjusted very well in this last year and a half and, and, you know, and, and things have gone relatively smoothly considering that, you know, the dysfunctional nature of, of meeting via Zoom and how we've done our meetings. But it's just, is, is it worth putting it into our, our protocol, our written protocols? Anyone object to that? Okay. Anyone else on this topic? A6? Okay, anything? Any items that council members would like to discuss between A6 and A11, which is the next item that is starred for discussion by staff? So A7 through A10, any questions on those? Okay, we'll move on to A11. Leah?
Thank you, Your Honor. The first is the street, annual street finance report. This report is put out by the Iowa Department of Transportation, and the intention of the report is to represent all funds spent on roads across all of the funds of the city. This report traditionally was due September 30th, so normally we actually would have presented on this in August. They actually remove, moved the due date to December 1st to align with the street finance report so that you can incorporate the numbers into both reports. And so in front of you, I do have the, up on the PowerPoint here, the summary page of the street finance report, the road use fund is highlighted there for you. Beginning balance was 7.118 million. Expenses and transfers out totaled 3.825. Revenue and transfers in 5.695 million, ending balance 8.989 million. On the next slide, I actually do show a little bit of the summaries on the revenues. There's only two revenues currently reflected in the road use fund. One is road use tax, which we did estimate conservatively and did exceed our budgeted amount in the amount of 778,580 over budget, which was a good thing to see. And the transfers in is from the urban forest utility for some of the right away cleanup. On the expense side, I just highlighted a few that I know council is typically interested in. Salaries and benefits, adopted budget was 2.78 million, actual was 2.5 million. Staff development, 32,300 budgeted, actual was only 1,264. Hopefully, none of this is a surprise to you as in the monthly report I've shared and I'm, you're going to hear it multiple times in my presentations today. The COVID-19 pandemic has put training and staff development kind of on hold, if you will, unless a virtual training is available. The other category, rather than list all of them, because you won't be able to read them all on the slide, it's large, 2.17 million, actual 884. Bulk majority of the difference in that one is due to the timing of street and winter supplies payment of. So you're talking your commodities, your salt, sand, and also the furniture and additional fixtures that were originally budgeted for the public service facility that was delayed. So that number looks large, but it's a lot just delayed items. And then transfers, similarly, the huge difference is because of the delay in the fleet replacement for the roads. Overall, the net position for the fund, the fund actually ended up increasing 1.87 million, whereas we had budgeted originally to decrease the fund 3.165. I wanted to keep that very brief. You did receive the report in your pocket. Are there any questions on the street finance report?
Any questions?
Moving on, the next agenda item was mine as well. It's the annual financial report for the year ending June 30th. Just as kind of a refresher, this annual report is submitted to the state by December 1st, following the fiscal year end. Revenues in the report, when you're reading it, are by source, expenditures are by function. And the report itself is a high level summary. It doesn't get into the real detail of where money is spent. And expenditures are monitored during the year for budget amendments. So the presentation I'm going to give you today is intended to supplement the report and provide highlights, it in no way goes over all of it. So I just wanted to say, we're going to start with a warning, we're going to proceed with caution because fiscal year 2021 was an extreme anomaly. We had the COVID-19 pandemic and Rachel natural disasters. One year does not constitute a trend, therefore we cannot rely on these numbers in looking to the future. Many items were one time in nature. We are on cash basis is another thing to remember. And consider as we future forecast, commercial backfill is phasing out. Multi-family residential rollback is continuing to decrease. And the Dratcho local chair, local share needs to be paid back or paid. And then just to explain the picture on the slide that I had there, this was a conversation I was having with someone that said, hey, it might be useful to kind of share an anomaly. Don't, or, and don't let this year fool you like Eric was fuel, was in The Little Mermaid, was fooled by the sea witch. The picture there is not Ariel, it is the sea witch. So that is kind of how this last year was. As we proceed to the next slide and looking at the general fund net position. So the huge number, obviously, that you're going to see there, the fund was budgeted to decrease 335,000. The fund actually increased the 3.31 million, which is why I'm saying, please proceed with caution. Do not get attached and think, wow, we had an amazing year, things were great. We did have an amazing year. We did fairly well considering both and, both of the natural disasters. But no, here you can, I, sorry. The year ended with an increase, but we also have some carryover requests of 286,508 to keep in mind. And then, like I said, the, the local share of Dratcho will have to be paid. So the 3.3 looks good. Let's dig a little bit further into the numbers. Now, when we do revenues, we estimate conservatively. Franchise fees, explaining the taxes line, were budgeted at 1.5 million, and they actually ended up at 1.98 million. And you might wonder why such the big difference. If you recall, we just started that franchise fee a couple of years ago and we are budgeting 18 months prior to the start of the fiscal year. So don't have a lot of trend data on the new electric gas franchise fee, so estimating is a little bit challenging. On the licenses and permits line, building permit revenue by far was the big difference there due to the hailstorm and Dratcho, building permit revenue was just above the adopted budget. Use of money and property, the huge difference on that one, interest was budgeted at 358,400. Actual revenue ended up at 88,418. City council is aware we are working on our investments. Unfortunately, a lot of our money was sitting in a bank account, so when interest rates dropped, so did our interest in the fund. Intergovernmental line was COVID-19 relief dollars. We did receive at approximately $960,000, making up the majority of that difference from budget to actual. Charges for services, rec programs, and the pool did not open for this fiscal year, majority of this fiscal year, so that is why we were way under budget on those lines. Miscellaneous revenues is largely due to insurance proceeds from vehicle claims. So those would, those revenues would have been offset by expenses for those vehicles. Those are my comments on the revenues. So digging into the expenses. Salaries had a difference. We were under budget by 853,000. Again, don't be fooled. Out of that number, the police department made up 308,000. I do want to put a kudos out to the chief, who's not currently here, and the police department because 120,000 of that was managing the overtime budget. Library, 157,000. Pool, of course, did not open, so out of that salaries line, 87,000. City manager's office, 101,000. I think most of that is the deputy city manager vacancy. And then legal, 61,000, as we had not yet brought legal in-house. So these are all positions budgeted, all positions still needed. We don't expect to have that in the future years. Benefits, of course, follow salaries, so it's just a percentage of salaries explaining that 344,000. The other line I thought worth talking about is capital outlay. There were a lot of delays in purchasing. And as I had mentioned previously, there's approximately 285,000 in carryovers, carryover requests that will come to council here as we get closer to the budget season. So moving on, just kind of a high level, I did decide to bring up some of the things that were, this was a slide shown in budget. I put the actual numbers up there so that you can see. Local option sales tax, we had budgeted conservatively at 5.15 million. Our actual ended up 6.15 million, so we gained a million there. Our road use tax, we had budgeted at 4.75 million, as I just pretty much shared. 5.69 million is where we landed. And hotel motel tax was budgeted at 205,000 and we ended up at 277,000. I will note the hotel motel tax is another one that is very difficult right now for us to understand a trend or really have a really good estimate on because COVID hit right around the time of the opening of the new hotels. So we don't have the history there either. Moving on to the road use proprietary funds. The B means budget and the A means actual. I wanted to just highlight really the sanitary sewer fund because of its negative net position. Road use, we've already kind of been over. Solid waste, urban forest and stormwater are healthy and doing well. Again, this is a slide I wanted to show from the budget with the one thing highlighted, hookup fees. All of the fees that were presented in budget that we said we were going to do, we did with the exception of that hookup fee for $2,000. And then just highlighting in on that sanitary sewer fund. The fund balance itself was budgeted at 0% growth with a balance of 180,583 for fiscal year 2021. Council did set a goal to have six months in operating expenses in reserve. Our operational revenues for the year did end up being 101% of budget, expenses being 105% of budget, making our net position negative, negative 680,000. I did highlight just one item of the expense side for you up there. Contracts 28E, that is our agreement with City of Cedar Rapids for operations and maintenance. You'll notice our adopted budget was 3.42 million, our actual was over 4 million. Some of the issue we have going there is only 11 operations and maintenance payments were made in the prior fiscal year, so going back to the, we're on cash basis, not a cool. But outstanding at June 30th, we, we were one payment behind and then there was a billing where we were disputing some flow charges that we didn't have the data to back up that we're still working on. Ultimately, we do want to let you know that we are working on a rate increase. Public service will be bringing that forward, I believe, at the next council meeting. And then just highlighting the capital projects fund. This was a, a very important fund to bring forth this year because again, it was an unusual year with Dratcho. All of the Dratcho expenses or most all of the Dratcho expenses were actually charged to the capital projects fund. We have been fortunate in that we've been able to cash flow thus far. The Dratcho, we do have a line of credit. That we have not yet drawn on so that it's there when we need it. There were temporary transfers in from some of the other funds in the amount of $6 million. So keep that in mind when you're looking at the net position of negative 13.66 million in the capital projects fund. And we are reviewing this on a month to month basis. So. You looked on the general fund, the general fund looks really, really good. But then when you look over on this capital side, we're not looking so hot. And then drilling in a little bit on the revenue side. Interest, we did strategically sell a security that wasn't earning a monthly dividend and with the drop in interest, it made sense to sell. So that explains why, at least on the capital side, we were above our budget by 106,985. On the federal grants line, I was actually quite impressed. That 7.464 number is about exactly what we received with our first reimbursement from FEMA. So that difference is accounted for with that. On the local grants side, the huge difference is reflective of a sewer project that has been delayed. Interest proceeds were largely Dratcho related. And transfers in, again, there was $6 million transferred in from other funds to help cash flow Dratcho. Moving on to the expense side, I did choose to only show projects that expended $1 million or more. So the budget reflected here is only the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget for these specific projects. It does not represent the full project budget. And again, just a reminder that our construction season is at the end of one fiscal year and the beginning of the next fiscal year. And we're also trying to forecast these projects 18 months prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. So this is again extremely difficult to forecast and budget for. Just noting, there were a couple of projects that were budgeted over 1 million, but did not reach 1 million. One being the 10th Avenue Side Paths project and the other being the Indian Creek Sanitary Trump Sewer Segment 7, which was 5.5 million budgeted. And then, of course, we can't do a finance, annual finance report without talking about debt. Debt outstanding, total debt is 84.16 million. The GO annually appropriated, just as a reminder, that terminology means. Only the payment for that year counts against our statutory debt limit. And that GO annually appropriated debt is the airport bond that we had done for the airport improvement project. The revenue debt, it consists of the public service utility as well as the loan that we have for the Hotel Tiff Grant. Marriott Town Place Suites. And then there you can see the general obligation is at 66.68 million. And then comparing that to the debt limit. Fiscal year 1819, we were at 36.68% of our limit. 43.58% in 2019, 2020 and 42.42% in 2021. So we kind of tend to hang around that 40, 45%. That was all of my slides. Do you have any questions?
So I understand all the numbers you presented are on a cash basis. But obviously there's, on, on a accrual basis, there'd be a pretty significant receivable from FEMA. If we were looking at that at the end of that year, so that's going to be flowing through in the next fiscal year. So how big is that number that is still out there for us to receive from FEMA approximately?
I will let Amal answer that because she's been the lead on that project and she has that number on her head.
A total project submitted to FEMA around 30 million. So we're expecting 85% of that to come back, 75% from FEMA and 10%, 10% from the state of Iowa.
But we had already received 7.4, so.
So I understand that. I understand the formula, but how much does FEMA still owe us based upon what we have submitted? At the end of that fiscal year or even as of right now?
Yeah, 27.
I don't know if you heard her say 27 something, but.
Total feedback expected 27.
The total 27, so be 20 left.
So they still, 20 million still coming to us.
Yep. And I will say, we don't necessarily expect that within the next year. When we did the flood of. When, when was that? Last year we did the flood? I can't remember. Was 2013, 20? Anyway, it was three years after that we received our final revenue. Things move very slow.
Okay. All right.
And this year, because of the multi-million dollar projects, they go extra step, which is congressional review. So there is more time expected. But the, the good thing, because we've broken the whole project into 10 different projects. So we have different projects at different stages. So we're expect to see more hopefully soon.
Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you, Leanne. Ami is here. When we talk about transferring monies to pay for debts that were incurred by the Dratcho. Are the same percentages being recouped back to the allocations where the monies came from? Or are we just simply putting those back into the general operating budget? Can you just give us a highlight on that?
I assume you're referring to the 6 million that I kept saying. Those are temporary transfers that will need to be. Because they were temporary, need to be returned to the funds for which they came.
Okay. So how do we, will there be something that will fall short? Because obviously we're not going to have 100% refund or rebate to that. So how, how will the shortage be allocated to the appropriate funds?
So that is done in the budget process. I mean, the 6 million will have to be returned. So when we receive proceeds back, 6 million will have to go back to those funds. But then we will have conversations during budget about how that. I know we had some dubs, and this will be shared at the next city council meeting during a presentation on, as we go into the budget season. But we had some dollars in the general fund already budgeted to cover some local share for this year and we were planning to do the same next year. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Total, I think the total local share is about 4.1 million. And we're estimating about 1.5 million just to be forced account labor. That is salaries we already paid. So we get reimbursed for, so we have to worry maybe about a couple of million in local share. And I believe we were talking about covering that from reserve and road use fund. And I think solid waste as well.
And obviously we'll have more trend conversations during the budget cycle.
Okay, Steve, you have something else?
Oh, anyone else?
Your honor.
Yeah, go ahead, Grant. Yeah, just back to the FEMA project submittals and the like. Do we have any outstanding projects that have yet to be submitted to FEMA?
We have one last project we're working on and that is management cost. That is category Z. So we submitted a total of nine projects. We're almost there.
Okay.
Have one more to go.
All right. Okay, good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, the remainder of page two and page three, there are no items marked. Are there any items any council members would like to discuss in particular? And then moving on to page four, items F1 through G2, any of those items? Anyone have questions on? And for your purposes, Renee and Will, I have my computer on up now so that I can see if you have the hand raised still. Okay, then for the next section, I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Proten.
Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Grant.
Yes, this concerns B2 and B3. I think maybe Ryan, you're the right person to respond to this. Are, are these payments for different timeframes for storage of the precast material? I didn't know, I mean, what stimulated my question initially was they're the same number.
Yeah, one's a change order, one's a payment. And so we're changing the contract total.
Yeah.
Right? And so right now, all the precast has been manufactured. We're still storing it until we get some movement on the new facility.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thanks.
Yep.
What are questions? Okay, I'll pass the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda. First item is marked A1. This is under administrative services. Is that Amal?
Yes, and back to FEMA.
Okay.
This is FEMA related, title based in government consultant. Has been helping us with FEMA public assistant grant. And the way our contract works is through task orders. So task order number one, staff is recommending to council amending that task order number one. To add extra time, six months will get us through June of 2022. Even though we have one project still to be submitted, but we're expecting the consultant to help us prepare for audit. And they've been helping us with FEMA reports. We have to do quarterly reports on projects. And they've been helping us with answering FEMA questions. This cost is 100% reimbursable by FEMA. So we're, we're expecting the full cost to be recovered. We have allowance that is 5% of total project eligible, total projects cost. To be available for administrative costs. So that would get us around 1.5 million. So we're extending the cap because the original task order we had capped at 250,000. It, it was our way of managing that cost, but we're confident 300 will get us there. I'm not anticipating using the full amount, but that would be a reasonable cap.
Go ahead, Grant.
So just to be clear, then it's an increase of $50,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Item C1 is not marked for discussion. Any questions on that? It is the final consideration of an ordinance. Okay, moving on to E1 under engineering. Mike?
Yes, your honor. So E1, E2 and E3 are all related to the same topic. Previously, we had a petition that was received and filed by council, sent to TAC. So the TAC report is in there. We'll have a public comment period on Thursday for the public to comment. I know I've gotten one comment back from the school district at this point. Might get more between then and, and then Thursday. So ultimately, the recommendation is to make both sides no parking. This is only a 21 foot wide street. With the previous item C1, the fire code is going back to a 20 foot minimum driveline. And so that one extra foot does not give us enough room to park cars on that street.
Okay, questions? Okay, no questions. E4?
E4 is one of our annual programs. So this is the storm sewer project. This is completely storm sewer related. This year it'll just be drain tile. There's two locations. They're both north of 29th Avenue to 33rd on 5th and 6th Streets. So the preliminary engineer's estimate is 119,000. Bids were received on 1130 of 21 with council consideration on 129 of 21. And then it has a late start date of 815 of 22 with 30 working days and $300 per day in liquidated damages. So we are recommending approving the project calendar so that we can get this project out and bid.
Questions for Mike? Okay, E5?
E5 is also another annual program that we have. This is where we take the existing sidewalk ramps. And we take them from either those that are dangerous or those that were adjacent to a, an HMA project. So most of them are along 29th Avenue, which we did overlay last year. So we come in afterwards and bring those up to compliance. So again, this has a preliminary estimate of 144,700. Same timeline for the bids received and council consideration. This one starts a little earlier with work commencing 613 of 22 with 50 working days. And liquidated damages and the amount of $300 per day. Again, most of them are along 29th Avenue. There's a few others that are sporadic. And so we're recommending to move forward with this project calendar as well, so we can get bids in for this project next year.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Mike, this is west of North 10th Street on 29th?
Yep. So that area that we overlaid last year.
Right. By the way, that was very much appreciated.
And those that don't know, there is an unfunded mandate that when we make street improvements, we have to then make it ADA compliant. And so this, we just follow it the following year as much as we can with the dollars available to get as much of it compliant as possible. If we were not to do that, there is a possibility of losing those road use funds that Leanne went over, so.
Do we have any idea how many?
At one point, I know is, we have a map. I can run those numbers for, for Thursday. But I believe it was going to take 30 years at the current funding level to get it to compliant. Again, the rules that we follow are proposed guidelines, so they're not even officially adopted. The Department of Justice has a hard time with those that have the disabled disabilities. For example, someone in a wheelchair doesn't like to go over those domes because it rocks them and it hurts. Versus someone that is partially or fully blind needs those so that they know that they're leaving the safety of the sidewalk and entering the street. And so trying to find something that both of those needs is very hard. So that's why they're still proposed guidelines. So in that 30 years that it takes us to get all of our ramps up to date, they will likely change in that amount of time.
Okay, any questions on this? All right, E6 is not marked. That's just approving the contract for the 3rd Avenue reconstruction. Any questions on that? All right, E7, Mike?
So E7, I'll try and explain this as much as possible without having a cursor. Basically, this is updating the 28E for the Tower Terrace section that is from C Avenue to Albernett Road. This determines how we're paying for it and how we're inspecting it. So there's that area that is between Meadow Knolls and. One of the section lines that's called annexation area B, that's kind of still in Lynn County. It is whoever wants to annex that area first, whether it be Cedar Rapids or Marion. And then there's a line in the sand that's on the western end of that, that everything west of that becomes Cedar Rapids. And then there's an annexation line, everything east of that is City of Marion. So what the 28E specifies is everything that we know is going to go into Marion is going to be 100% paid by the City of Marion. We will provide inspection services with our field inspection. And then the City of Cedar Rapids will do the administration. There's a program with an electronic field book called Appia that we will use. We'll have to set up a, a meeting between the two jurisdictions to discuss how we go about day-to-day activities. We didn't put all of those processes in the 28E. The section that could be either jurisdiction in the future, we are splitting 50/50. Because we don't know which jurisdiction is going to take that area. And then the area that will be Cedar Rapids in the future is 100% paid for by the City of Cedar Rapids. There will be a further discussion that I will give on Thursday. We recently bid the section that is from Albernett Road to just east of the Meadow Knoll subdivision. And I'll go over those bids and that process on Thursday. But this 28E then moves forward. But this 28E then moves forward. Lynn County is included as a part of this 28E. They will not be paying any funds towards it, but because a portion of it is still in the county and we have not annexed those areas in. They have to be part of that negotiation. So it'll be signed by all three parties. So in your packet, there is the new proposed 28E. Legal has reviewed that. So I guess I would open it up if there's any questions. It's a fairly lengthy document.
Questions? Okay, no questions. We'll move on to E8.
So E8 and E9 are also together. So E8 is a motion to receive and file a request to add a driveway on Winslow Road. And then E9 is the vote that is written to allow the access. Ultimately, staff's recommendation is to deny that access. In your council packet, there are several subdivisions listed and who got access and who did not as part of those subdivisions. Winslow Road is classified as a collector's street on our major streets network. So you can see the proposed driveway is the red that's shown on there. Taking an existing lot that has access to Winslow Court to the south. Splitting that lot into two lots so that a new house can be built on the north portion of that lot. So the letter from the petitioner is in your council packet. I do want to also note that the sanitary sewer, so if you look at the left picture, there's a sanitary sewer that comes up south of Winslow Court. It's a six-inch line that then splits into several four-inch lines that actually serve all those houses. Because they have had issues with their septic system. What the petitioner is planning on doing to get access to serve the new lot is actually to extend that six-inch main on the south side of Winslow Court to the west. And then put an easement that would be on the west side or frontage along Winslow Road that would extend northerly. And then it would serve that new lot. That's not necessarily the best approach, but it's how they're getting sanitary to it. There's other options. They could bore from the Hunter's Ridge Golf Course. There's a trunk sewer there. Or they could bore under the detention basin that's on the other side of Winslow Road to get access to that sanitary sewer. So this isn't a very well situated lot for that sanitary sewer, but they can get sewer there. The other option was they could also petition to city council to put in a private lifts there, a private septic system, but at this point, they're looking at actually tying into the city sewer. So at this point, their only request is the driveway access. And I'll let Dave talk a little bit about how this conforms with the neighboring area.
Yeah, as proposed, they're looking at about a half acre while they're looking at a minimum half acre lot being proposed. The owner of the property, the house to the south, he intends to build on the property to the north. The, or the lot angles are, they're there to accommodate the required setbacks. It's not how the engineer wanted it, but it's, it's how it's required to meet the zoning regulations. At a half acre, it's, it's smaller than the lots on Winslow Court. They're all about an acre and a half, more or less. So a little bit smaller. And as we go up and down Winslow Road, it's a pretty mix of, I'm gonna call it typical suburban development, larger lot, but nothing, nothing much over a quarter of an acre, more or less. We're reviewing the request now. If the request is approved for the driveway, the final plan does go to the planning zoning commission in November. And then back to the city council. That's if the driveway is approved. If it's not, then I'm sure they're back to the drawing board. They've indicated, I think it's in the letter as well. I hadn't read the letter in a week or a couple days at least. You know, the owners intend is to build, the owner of the house to the south intends to build a house to the north. Like Siri wants to stay, just it's a lot of house. If you've driven by it, it's a, it's got a mother-in-law quarters or granny flats or accessory structure or accessory residential unit in it. So it's a lot of house. Again, like Mike had said, staff's recommendation is always denial on these cases. And I think there's maybe two or three different situations that they were approved with in the past. So it's kind of a case-by-case review of these.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Dave, I, I looked at this with the help of my friends at Google Maps. And I noticed that the aerial indicates that, I forget what the distance is. But to the north of this location, there are many multiple residential structures that have driveways that enter on Winslow on the same side of the road. So I'm trying to understand from the existence of those existing residences to the north. The, I guess the logic of why we would naturally deny then a driveway at this location.
Yeah, the classification of the road did not exist as a collector when those homes were built back in the early, late 90s, I'm guessing. So that it got reclassified as a collector and by city policy, they don't allow driveways or minimize driveways on collectors. If that, if Hunter's Ridge came in today, those driveways would be, we'd recommend denial of those driveways. They had to come to the council and get them. So it's really just a change in the classification of the street that doesn't allow staff to approve it.
So in your, in your council packet, the very last subdivision that's listed in there is Hunter's Ridge Golf Club, first and fifth edition. So that's both north and that allowed all those in there. That occurred in 95 and 97. And that, during those years before I was here, development was not happening. And so a lot of things were let go and passed to do that would not necessarily mean that we would pass them today. So just because we made mistakes in the past doesn't mean we want to keep making those mistakes.
Is there anything from a safety perspective with a driveway making an entry there that increases the problem that already exists along Winslow?
If it's safety, I'll ask the chief what her opinion is on that.
Actually, we really don't have any concern with that. From a fire safety point of view.
I can tell you that the people that live in those houses that have access directly onto a collector do not like the amount of traffic. And so many of those houses have sold and resold, and that's the reason why is they don't like all that traffic.
Well, your comments about the, the history on this and the change of designation is certainly informative. And I can also understand the desire to want to, you know, in essence, draw a line in the sand and say, look, we have to comply with what we are operating under at this point. I was, again, the basis of my question really was the existence of driveways versus the request for this one, so.
Okay, I see Renee has a question.
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, I just wanted to underscore, Grant, kind of where you were going with it and what Mike said. As the steward of Ward 4 for the last four years, I've heard from several of the Winslow Road people. They are concerned about backing out the speed. And then, you know, so I wouldn't recommend it based on the communications I've had over the last four years with the people who are there. And then I think that this document that Mike presents, you know, the last approval was 25 years ago or so. I'd hate to open up and start a precedent and starting to allow more on Winslow because the traffic flow is pretty high. And once Tower Terrace is built out, it's only going to get more in addition to the development. So I agree with staff. I, I, I won't, or I'll agree to deny this or vote in that, that manner for that reason.
The, the development to the north wasn't existing back then. I mean, the traffic is much greater on that street now. Will has a question. I mean, come back to you, Grant, okay?
Yes, so Grant brought up what I was going to bring up, but then also to the south between, well, Par Circle and Rolling Glen Drive. There's multiple houses on the east side of Winslow that were just built in the last few years. In fact, one, I think, just finished last year. So they all have driveways on to Winslow. So I'm questioning why those were allowed in the last few years, but not why this one would not be allowed.
Yeah, and there were, there are some in the memo again. Let's see, it's Huntington Hills has three entrances that were allowed. And there was one other one where one entrance was allowed, but in the vast majority, none have been allowed. So again, with a collector, it's, it's recommended not to have those accesses. Not that they can't happen, but that's staff's recommendation. So if city council feels that this should be allowed, that's why it's coming before city council.
Sorry, Will, are you asking about the the four that back up to the golf, the four or five that back up to the golf course?
Correct. Yeah, because like I said, one just, I think it was last year, it just got finished.
Might just been a residual lot.
Yeah, that, oh, that one, I think we had the original, I'd have to go back into the history again. That was approved back in the 90s. But originally plaid, it might have been originally part of the preliminary plat back in the early 90s. So we may have been, and they've developed consistent with the preliminary plat, so we may have been in a position where we kind of had to approve those because the plat, the preliminary plat was approved with those four or five lots fronting. I'd have to go back and triple check that. That was done a few years back originally. But there's four or five lots that do back up to the golf course, do front on the Winslow with that last Hunter's Ridge addition. But that might have been with pre-agreements back in the 90s. But I can't, I don't want to commit to that 100%. If I can just comment on that too. So once, once you have an approved preliminary plat and you take, and the council takes action and the developer moves forward with the final plat, that locks in that preliminary plat. So that preliminary plat is good to go until it's platted completely out. So you can't, difficult for us to change. So if you have a preliminary plat with 100 lots, you do a 10-lot subdivision every, every year. When you get to the end, it's going to be dated. But we, we can't, as a council or a city, go back and say, well, you know, we just want five lots and switch it around on them. Once that preliminary plat, it's like the roadmap moving forwards. It's kind of an entitlement at that point. And I believe that most of those were that way. As a matter of fact, one of them, I mean, there's a reason they're the last ones built out of a 25-year plat is because the access was not the greatest. I do think we did add a final plat there. I don't believe that, I, I'm speaking without full, full knowledge of view in the file. But I can't imagine that there was a recommendation to proceed with that if it wasn't consistent with the preliminary plat. Because we didn't do that for any of the other developments moving forward. But if it was preliminary platted, and it is 25 years later, there's an obligation that we stick with that preliminary plat. That's to Will's point, that's probably why, but we can verify that for Thursday.
Sure, and I believe if you go down even further south on Winslow, in the Larkspur area, I believe there's also, which has all been platted recently, I assume. There's one that's been approved, I believe it's been approved for access on Winslow, the driveway.
Correct, there's, there's one lot on the north side of Winslow, right before the bend, it's right by the basin, that's part of the shoot, yeah.
Yes.
It is a single lot there, though.
Right, so I mean, it just, with all, in my mind, I'm in favor of this, doing this for these folks because it's precedent has been set all along Winslow Road over the last however many years. And one been approved within the last, I guess, I don't know, five years maybe on that development down there, 10 years, so. Yeah, that's just my thought.
Great, Steve?
Yeah, I, I drove that area this afternoon because I wasn't quite sure exactly where this lot was. We're talking about that they want to have subdivided. And driving out there, my first thought was, yeah, there's other driveways that have access to Winslow. But if on the north side, a lot of people know there's a lot of driveways there because you have a lot of houses. And there's a lot of driveways in a row. But I just looked at this area and it just didn't seem right to have one driveway in a pretty large area all by itself. And, you know, if they, if they bought that as an acreage and that whole court is a multitude of acreages to me. Subdividing, it doesn't make sense to me either. So I would probably not be in favor of this driveway for those reasons.
Grant, you had something?
Yeah, just a comment with the enhancements made out on County Home Road with turn lanes and, and the like, as well as I think there were some pavement. Obviously, that helps drive up the vehicular traffic up and down Winslow Road. So I guess I was just thinking back to Renee's comments relative to what her inputs have been over time. So this is an interesting problem to have. And I would just say I need to think about this in between now and Thursday.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to other department discussions. We have a discussion regarding community survey questions. See, we have Amber here.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. As you know, we are due to do our community-wide survey in the next couple of months. And in the packet, you will find the copy of the questions, simply a draft at this point. But wanted to give you an opportunity to weigh in. I have my first meeting with our project manager tomorrow. So we'll work closely with them on question design and any additions or changes that you would like to see. So just kind of wanted to give you the opportunity to discuss.
Anyone have anything for Amber? Will, go ahead.
I just, I just want to say that I read through the questions and I think what is in there is good. And I don't have anything to add to it. So I think, good job, Amber.
I can't even take credit, but thank you, Will.
Go ahead, Steve. Yeah, I think from the standpoint of the consistency from two years, every two years, that's asking a lot of the same questions, then we can get the trends and that information back. Can you remind us again what your timing is on when these will be sent out? When we expect the results? We've got obviously our budget time coming up. And to me, this is always a very important piece of information to have when we are working on our budget.
Yes, we are pushing our hardest to be able to have those results in hand by the time the budget is created. I will know more tomorrow in terms of the holidays, kind of throw a wrench into things. So not knowing the firm's capabilities, I don't want to speak out of turn. But we certainly, our hope is to have that information by budget.
Now, are we sending out hard copy to individuals plus asking for electronic feedback? And then after a certain period, it's open to everybody in the community? Is that the correct manner in how we're doing it?
Yes, it used to be strictly paper format. And as we've worked with this company, it's kind of transitioned as the times have changed. 1,200 paper copies will go out to a random sample of Marion residents. 1,500 postcard invitations will go out and giving people the opportunity to participate in that survey, but using the online link. And then, once that portion is completed, we'll open it up to all residents for an opt-in option. And then we get reports back that kind of, what we've seen is the feedback aligns. But it's, it's helpful to kind of see how, as many people feel as possible.
Renee?
Thank you, mayor. Thanks, Amber, for this. I just had a quick question and I apologize. I'm sure you said it and I missed it. When do the results, once this gets out in general, when will the results be collected?
I believe it's about a two to three month window. So with this meeting tomorrow, I'll have a better idea and I can share the project timeline once that's kind of on paper.
Will they also, or do you have yet, because I actually am looking at, you know, the survey we got last time and I was going through that. And I think what will be super interesting will be to look at the survey results. You know, it's, it's really when you can mark data on a chart and connect the dots to start looking at trends. So I was wondering, even though I won't be there to look at it, if council will be given the, the feedback in a way where they can look at trends based on how attitudes have maybe shifted and how that might inform, you know, future decisions on these. Or will it just be like, kind of like a data dump and, and organized by percentages like the last time? Do you know if they'll link the two together so we can look at history?
You know, they have added an online dashboard that we'll have access to with this iteration. So I think we'll get some of the same reports that you're familiar with, but having access to that dash That you're familiar with, um, but having access to that dashboard will help us, um, drill down into some of the, you know. This ward had this reaction to this, you know, type of question, um, we'll have that capability to drill deeper into that.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I was just, you know, again, I, I had mentioned the airport thing, and I was looking at. The feedback from two years ago, and you know, I see it still on here in the same way, and. Even more relevant, the outdoor pool aquatic center question that we asked a couple of years ago. Is obviously much more timely now since we've gotten that initial consultant work back, so I was just curious about looking. For me in particular, those two are, are, um, you know, important data nodes, but I was just wondering about the format. I think it's, this is. A great idea, I wish we could expand it to more or have more people, um, plug into it, but I know you do a great job of all of the avenues and getting it out there, so. Um, cool, can't wait to see what we all say.
Sounds good. Um, based on the feedback I received from the leadership team and from council via email. Um, I do plan to carry forward at working with the consultant, um, the two questions that we used last time for the. The custom questions we can add, um, how people get their information, um, and then also. The, uh, property tax fee increase, the level of support for those, which Renee just referred to, so. We can certainly change, um, some of the items on that list if, if council is interested, um, but if you feel they're still relevant. Um, and that trend data is important, um, I think it's helpful to carry forward what we've done.
What is the typical response rate?
Uh, we achieve a plus or minus five percent, um, uh, the word's gonna escape me. I'm looking at grants, um, yes, so, um, we've, you know, I.
I think about twenty-five hundred respondents.
Just curious.
So statistically significant.
Okay, other questions for Amber?
The other thing I, I will add is, um, we do have access to POCO, um, the online survey. Um, for those project-specific questions, so I know, um, at different times, um, public service. Um, services to the community has come up, or, um, things that might be. Worthy of a survey all on their own, um, we can use this as a tool to, to connect with residents and gather feedback that way. We're using it right now actually for, um, resident input on the use of the ARPA funds.
Other questions or input on the survey? Thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
Okay, Marion Transit, is that Tom or ML? Oh, it's Kesha, hello.
I've come out of hiding from the second floor.
Welcome, welcome back.
Good afternoon or evening, uh, Mayor and Council. So I wanted to touch base, it's not often that we have a discussion about transit. In Marion, so you see the buses around, okay, they're, they're doing their thing, right? Well, what does this mean for Marion? So this up on the screen is our route in Marion, and so I've pointed some. Um, there's some red dots on there, and those are some of our most significant routes, and so. Um, just wanted to give you an idea, this is an hour circulator, right? And so every hour it stops at one of those dots, right, on the hour, so you, you. You continue this loop, it's, I don't know if it's how many miles Brad said it is, or, or how many, it's not necessarily how many stops, it's the miles and. Kind of the turn movements and stuff as far as keeping that rhythm going, all, all to make it back to a transfer point at Twixtown Road. At the same time each hour, so the buses all function from there. Next slide. And so our average daily on and offs, um, this isn't a full and accurate, like, every month counted specifically, but these were. Significant, uh, numbers of months in each year that I was able to get from Cedar Rapids Transit, they do on and offs. And so these are not just the total ridership, but you can kinda probably cut that in half, right? So two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, you know, kinda went up a little bit in two thousand twenty. That's when they, the, so the buses shut down for a while, but then there was free fares for a while, so I'm not quite sure on that one. Specifically in two thousand twenty-one, it just hasn't quite rebounded as well when we're, when we're opening things back up. For that, and so again, the, it's all the ons and offs, and typically the. Half of the counts are at the transfer points, what that's telling me is a lot of people are either coming into Marion, transferring at Twixtown. And heading on to Cedar Rapids, um, or vice versa, and then the last slide showed the, the red dots were those. You could see those dots were all around town. It's not like we have a, a heavy influx, or, you know, moving of people. In a certain area of town, it literally is, you know, your, your Walmart, your Hy-Vee, your, uh, North Tenth Street, South Fifteenth Street. It, it really is kind of all speckles of that, of that area. Uh, next slide. And so this is pretty wordy, sorry for that, but, uh, just a little bit of background, it's been operating since before the nineteen seventies. So the current Cedar Rapids Transit Director says he remembers riding it as a kid, and, and it was going on well before then. Um, in two thousand seventeen, we went from two ninety-minute circulating buses. To one sixty-minute, so we increased our time, but we did limit it to one, um, one bus in Marion, and so there was a, there was a. You know, an increase in cost of service that we weren't keeping up with, and so we switched it to the one-hour circulator at the, at kind of a no-cost difference. Um, for us, we currently pay, uh, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand for transit service in Marion. Uh, Cedar Rapids proposed extending the transit service hours in Cedar Rapids and the whole metro area. And extended two hours each night, we opted out of that, it would have been an increased cost. To Marion, and so we opted out of that, um, and so right now Cedar Rapids has proposed a twenty-eight-year agreement for services. Right now, we don't have any agreement for services, it's just kinda like, well, this is your bill Marion, and this is what we pay, and. Um, you know, and, and Cedar Rapids has been forthcoming, anytime we ask questions about. You know, what Cedar Rapids pays, what, you know, what are some of those costs in there, uh, more than willing to supply that? Brad, uh, is a transit manager at Cedar Rapids, so very open to any kind of questions that we have. Uh, but they've come forth with the twenty-eight-year agreement for services, and that twenty-eight-year agreement does spell out for FY twenty-two. A cost of five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for, again, that one-hour circular, uh, in Marion. Um, and to add an additional bus, so if we wanted to just, you know, maybe expand some services and maybe have like one additional bus just come. Um, up First Avenue and have like a fifteen-minute frequency to Uptown or something, or have another bus added in there, again, at that. To expand some of our service areas, it, it's probably looking around four hundred and thirty thousand. Starting off.
Additional?
Yes, so I mean, you, you double the bus, you double the rider, you double the bus, the gas, the time, you know, everything, so it.
Wouldn't.
It is what it is.
Yeah, one, one thought is instead of, right now, Cedar Rapids is trying to keep to, I think, an hour route. Um, or one, a bus that goes up and down First Avenue ever, every.
Fifteen minutes.
Every fifteen minutes, so we've, ideally, we would get uptown Marion to downtown Cedar Rapids, that would be great. They just can't stretch it that far, um, so we've, th- that's the alternative would be. To, to try and get them uptown, and we think of the increased ridership between the two areas. Nonetheless, it's very expensive. Currently, they drop at Twixtown, and so without the night service, there's still a gap in service, but, um, then. That's working, but it's, it's not great, but I, so that's. As we talk about expanding the service, the idea was that we would not be dropping people at the edge of town, that they would get to the core of the community, um, for, for activities. Um, I just wanna point out, and I think this is extremely important as we start talking about and walking down the road towards budget. As indicated, we're, we're currently, currently paying four sixty-seven, and I believe that that's all being paid out of the, the transit levy. So right now, we pay twenty-six cents in a transit levy, and Cash is gonna go into this. What this means is regardless of what happens. All things being equal, if we don't change or do anything, we've got a budget impact of seventy thousand dollars related to providing, uh, transit service in Marion. Coming up in the next budget year, um, so it's. I wanna gloss over that, there's a, that's a pretty big budget impact, and that's a specific levy within the, the tax levy, so.
Yeah, and that four hundred and thirty at the bottom that's listed is not part of the twenty-eight-year proposed by Cedar Rapids. You know, the, the twenty-eight-year is just kinda standard of what we have now, our circulator, that extra is just if we wanted to expand, and I'll explain. Why we might want to in some later slides.
Steve, Steve had a question on this.
Well, while we're talking about the, the dollar impact, uh, possibly on the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Did they indicate what the reason is for a fifteen percent increase?
And that is.
Going from four sixty-seven to five thirty-five, what is driving a fifteen percent increase?
I would say that that is operation, maintenance, staff. Um, I, I don't know that I've gotten, I don't know that we've had that. It is.
I'm assuming it's just operation.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it is, we've never had a contract, and I, I, we could go back and run the history of it, but. Um, from our. The, the city's never entered into an agreement regarding that service, it's just been billed to us. So what they're wanting to do is solidify it in an agreement through a twenty-eight-year, so we can get those answers, and I'm sure Brad would come in and gladly provide. Um, documentation of that. What they're saying this year is that, that, that's the billing, um, so we can ask the questions, but.
Well, if we're gonna in- increase it by that much, I certainly would want some explanation. I have no issue about the twenty-eight-year, twenty-eight-year agreement.
Yeah.
I mean, that aspect doesn't concern me at all, it's just that, uh, anytime you have any cost increase of that amount. And I know inflation's up, obviously higher for the fiscal year, but nowhere near fifteen percent, it's running five percent. Not fifteen, so I would certainly request some explanation for that.
Yeah, yep, and they did, they understand the budget process too, so they, they're providing the information early on.
And, and I think that, um, in two thousand seventeen, again, when we switched the routes, there was, um, discussion then. About how the, the request for Marion for funding hasn't kept pace with their cost for the buses as well, and so we saw some fifty thousand dollar increases. You know, like an initial year and a couple of years after that, that they were trying to right-size our payment to the service that we were actually getting. I think that, I think that they had been under-asking, um, from us. For, for some time, and I don't know if this is part of that as well, is right, kinda right-sizing that cost of, of the services that we're actually getting. Um, so a comparison of what we pay, and this was provided by Cedar Rapids, again, I, I trust Brad to, to have full and accurate. Numbers on this one, but, um, Marion's Transit Levy is twenty-six cents, and so Cedar Rapids pays eighty-one. Uh, you get into Iowa City, you're in Iowa City, it's kinda that unicorn that has that, that whole university thing going on, right? And, and, and a full-on medical, uh, unit, that is a section of their town. Um, Dubuque, Waterloo, you know, again, you're seeing sixty-one, I wasn't able to find the numbers from Cedar Falls, I thought that that would, might be interesting. If a comparable to Waterloo may be a larger transit user, but again, Cedar Falls is kinda one of those university towns that has this. Uh, captured audience per se, that, that they have their own kind of, uh, bus system there. Um, what's interesting is Ankeny, Johnson, West Des Moines, you know, those are, those are some of those, um, users in the metro system. They do have, uh, regional transit authority there, and so that is one thing that they, they can go up to that ninety-five cent. Limit, um, however, none of the, none of the suburbs looking at this are, but if you look at Ankeny, I mean, Ankeny's. Double our size, I mean, they grew significantly, but they're sixty-five cent levy, uh. Totals two point seven million, I mean, I mean, it, it goes up substantially from that, um. Less than half of the levy rates, we are less than half of the levy rates of all but Council Bluffs and Coralville, so they might have been under that fifty. Fifty-cent levy rate, and so I mean, that's a, that's a significant change from, uh, a difference from where we are. To kind of what, what any comparables that we have in this state. Um, like I said, Cedar Falls is, is kinda that. Piggybacked on Waterloo, but again, it's, it's tough to have that comparable, um, big brother, little brother type of scenario. When you've got a, yeah, a university involved, uh, next slide. And then, so what we have is we do have some growing pains. Um, I have received requests for additional service out to the YMCA. We have this great facility that our bus operations don't go to Laux Park, I mean, we've had that for a number of years, we have the, the. Um, senior lunches out there, senior activities out there, hosted by our parks, and, and we don't have that transit service out there. Um, the northeast corner of Highway thirteen and one fifty-one, that would include an entire mobile home park, uh, doesn't have service. Uh, and the Marion Enterprise Center, again, we've, we've tried to work with Nick, I think that there have been some requests from businesses. To, to have that additional service out there, it's just that timing is which stop. Which number of stops, which area of town don't you wanna cover to continue that service out there? Um, a couple of limiting factors. Is that the left-hand turns, I mean, so, so asking one of the, the large buses, I wouldn't wanna drive one of those, try, trying to turn. Um, onto Business One Fifty-One or anything like that, so, um, they try and limit their risk as well, and so they try and. Try and limit the left-hand turns at a non-signalized intersection, even intercept, signalized intersections become. A conflict when trying to, if you time the lights good, you're good, if you time the lights bad, you're, you know, you're, you're kinda behind a little bit, so just something to think about, these are some. Some areas that I've heard, um, from, from residents that, or business owners. That might be, that might be warranted to, to ponder, you know, if we were to be able to expand service, uh, next slide. And then, so we were recently approached by Horizons, they currently do our after-hours, so when the Cedar Rapids Transit buses stop running. Horizons offers our after-hours service, it is kind of an on-demand service, I believe that they require like twenty-four hours in advance. I'm not quite sure that it's on-demand, like you, like you'd anticipate with an Uber, but it is. Um, by request, you know, they, they pick you up and they, and they take you where you need to go, I believe it's like five or six dollars per ride, so it's not cheap. Um, current service in Cedar Rapids is a dollar fifty. Um, obviously, that, that piece of revenue only comes back like ten or fifteen percent towards the whole scheme. But it's again, how much you wanna subsidize for your, for your riders to be able to get where they're going without costing them ten dollars per day. To get where they're going, um, and so it's hosted by Horizons using the Via platform, and so it's kind of a. You know, you enter what time you wanna be picked up, where you're going, and it kinda tells you, okay, we'll work you into our system. Um, so you can use your phone, computer, or telephone to reserve that, that, you know, they do have people call in for that, um, at least. Um, this is an hour in advance, so that might be true for nighttime service as well, that's capped, I don't believe it goes all night long. Um, and so it's already being used, this Via platform is already being used for after-hours service. Um, it would integrate, obviously, we'd want that to integrate with Cedar Rapids Transit, so you're not double-feeding. Anytime you'd need to go from Marion into Cedar Rapids Transit, um, and ideally, we'd anticipate a lower cost going with. Horizons, and that would be the on-demand service, right? So you'd be able to, you'd be able to use your phone. If you have a mobile phone on your, um, hour before your ride, at least, you can book them up to two weeks in advance. You know, so you could say, I need picked up every day at this, at this time, you'd be able to do that. Um, so that's something that we're looking into, that's, that's something we've been approached with by both Horizon and Cedar Rapids Transit, you know, Cedar Rapids Transit realizes. Their bus system that goes on their major, major thoroughfares might not be as much of a fit for Marion. When we, when we have the growth that we have, uh, next slide. And so the next step, we would ideally like to survey the users in Marion, maybe large businesses, um. You know, maybe some of the, some of the residential facilities or residential areas that we don't, that we've heard from, but we haven't. You know, we haven't gotten a chance to survey them yet, um, and then we'd like to do that kind of cost analysis. What are we, what are we getting, what kind of service would we get, be getting, what, what that means for Marion? And then obviously, you know, Tom said, you had to kinda work that into budget discussion for what that means for our levy rate, what that means for. Um, kinda what we'd expect for the face of Marion Transit going forward, and then ideally develop a contract for transit services. Going from there. Any questions of staff?
Just like, go ahead, Tom, if I could, uh, talk a little bit about the Via service, uh, so Cedar Rapids and Horizons actually came in and, and spoke with us. Um, and Cedar Rapids really was. Indicating that this would be a much better solution likely for the city, and the costs, we've got some preliminary numbers. There might be some, depends on the route you go, but there may be some, uh, higher upfront costs, but the overall might be lower. Um, and so we're, we're just looking at those alternatives, but, uh, it would be smaller units, almost like a hotel shuttle. It could be branded to the city of Marion, um, it would be, uh, operated, maintained, and taken care of by Horizons. Um, be the lower-cost one, would have a startup of two buses, or two. Smaller buses, um, then they would be paratransit, um, and take care of all the. Then they would be paratransit um, and take care of all the needs of, of, of folks. So uh, anyway, we wanted to just let you guys know that as we move forward and talk about transit, there's been options developed that we've not seen in the past. Um, and we're going to start exploring those. Um, and I'm, thus far, it looks like a pretty exciting opportunity to be honest. If you can imagine uh, having to, to be structured to that one-hour timeframe and then even if you're going from your home to Walmart, you know, you have, you'd have to have that hour wait uh, to go to a, an on-demand system would be pretty, pretty spectacular. So it also would provide the opportunity to work with our employers and, which could be a much better situation. I know Legacy Manufacturing at some, at one point was looking for ridership and we just couldn't stretch it out there. So if you can imagine riding the bus to Quick Star essentially, and then walking to Legacy in December, them is just not. And, and if you think about when you drive around the community um, and you see a bus stop, our bus stops aren't uh, fully developed. So some, some folks are standing in the grass. Some are, you know, and in the winter time, it's not, they're not all taken care of in the way that we would like. It's just not possible. This is, this on-demand service could literally be like an Uber where it's, it comes to your door. So it's a really great opportunity. We're going to dive into the details. And what we, we'll likely do when we come back with a, with the conversation on budget is, is have the folks from Horizons give a little uh, presentation on what this Via service does um, so the council can see that. So. Anyway, we just wanted to bring you guys along as we've had these conversations internally and let you know where we're at with transit.
I think this is a great option. Um, the people from Horizons met with me, I don't know, several months back and wanted to know what I think of something like this. And I said, talk to our staff because I think it's a great idea. I mean, you, when you look at the buses, these big vehicles, uh, you know, they're never full. I mean, I don't know how many people are on the bus at one time and there's not really great coverage of Marion. It's one route. This point-to-point kind of system seems like, I mean, it makes sense with a smaller vehicle. And um, the one thing I, that I shared with them was I would want to make sure in the process of doing something like this, that the reason why we have a bus service, the people who use, who need that don't fall through the cracks because of the cost. You know, that, that, that's like, to me, is a major consideration is what is the cost of doing something like this to the user? Because, I mean, that's why we have public transportation to begin with, because, you know, for people that don't have their own car or their own mode of transportation. And uh, so I, I thought it was very attractive. I mean, I just talked very briefly about it with them, but I said, you know, I, I'd be in support of it if, if they pitched it to the staff and, and to see if there's any, you know, any way to make it work. And my question at the time was, what is, how is Cedar Rapids Transit going to react to it? But it sounds like they're okay with it.
Good. And it, and it sounds like just having Horizons and Cedar Rapids Transit in the room. So Brad Rauer is the, like I said, the, the manager at Cedar Rapids there and he understands Marion's in a whole different game than Cedar Rapids right now as far as, you know, as far as what we need for our ridership. And, and it's, and like I said, it's, it's that understanding of their fare box pays for ten or fifteen percent of their, you know, of their revenue. So I mean, they get to decide how much they're, you know, paying for the transit, you know, paying for that, that majority of the cost and how much they're actually asking the riders to, to pay into that. And that'll be a decision point for, for council as well as far as how much we use the levy dollars to, to pay for that and what we'd expect ridership to pay as well. So um, and again, it's all, gets back to, to me, it's a big deal to, to seamlessly integrate with Cedar Rapids Transit and it sounds like from, from their perspective, they're, they're more than happy to
I think that's a major thing.
Happy to
If they're in support of it, I think that's, that's a big hurdle. Um, so anyway, any other, any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a I, I think I'll try to ask, ask maybe only a couple. I've got a little list of questions here. Um, I agree. Sounds like a great opportunity to investigate, right, this sort of point-to-point on-demand. However, I'm not an expert in this space, right? I don't rely on public transportation. I did look into it once and it was just taking me like two hours to get to work every day, which seemed a little unreasonable, right? But I just wonder if there's any sort of um, data or understanding in communities like ours, sort of what kind of system works best? And as we continue to develop and build more apartments where we might have folks move into our community that don't have access to their own transportation, right? Is there one system that works better than another? Or is it a combination of some systems? So as much as I would like to say on-demand seems really attractive to me, I don't use it. And so I feel like we just need maybe some more information before we make, you know, a decision in that space.
And I think, and I think on-demand would help limit that disparity. Like you said, I mean, someone who, who needs to use transit, you know, of course, well, they only pay a dollar fifty, right? Well, it takes them two hours out of their day just to get to their job and back because their car broke down or, you know, for a series of unfortunate events, they're not able to drive themselves there or maybe they don't want to. You know, but it is a, it, you also have to think about, you know, what you're asking people using public transit will, will is cheaper. Well, yes, but they also lose a lot of their time during the day to do that. Um, I did speak specifically with um, someone in the Economic Development Department with City of Ankeny. And they also have these growing pains of how, how fixed route service may work for Des Moines and some parts of the RTA that, um, that the transit covers there. But what do they do for the growing areas? As soon as they think they've got the fix, there's another development with more, you know, with more residential buildings or more community attractions that um, they, we are not alone. Just to, just to put it that way, that it's, it's this constant struggle of, of how are we reaching everyone that wants to be reached at the same time without breaking the bank on what we're asking them to pay or the time that we're asking them to spend on public transit.
And the, I think the assumption that these folks have access to a way in which to make that reservation as well, right? So we're assuming they might have a cell phone or they might have access to a computer. And I think those are just all things we need to consider, big picture. It's exciting that we're continuing to pay attention to this need in our community as we continue to grow. I just think we need to make sure that, you know, we're asking those folks what really will serve them best, which leads me into maybe just my last question for day, today. And I can't remember, on the survey that goes out, Amber, is there something about public transportation on there that we can look from a trend perspective that would help inform some of this as well?
Actually, on the community survey, there are a couple of questions that ask um, ease of travel by public transportation, overall quality of the system. Um, and I'm sure looking at it a little more closely, we'd find a couple others too.
So that'll be helpful as we all continue to consider options for us. So thank you for that.
But you're going to directly target the users with a, a separate survey, the actual users? Is that what you put up there?
That was my intent. This is news to Amber. Um, so we
I think, I think we do both, right? I mean, because Ambers might not capture all the users of the, the, of, of public transit, but a directed survey towards users.
Yes, for, for, and, and again, Brad's willingness to say, yeah, for sure, our driver can, I mean, so it's the same driver that makes the loop, you know, for the predominant day of, of, through Marion, you know, and he's like, yeah, sure, the drivers can hand that out every on. You know, and take them back before they get off. I mean, so for sure. Um, and then, and any type of app that would be available as well if somebody wanted.
I'd also point out that we, we did include this in one of the buckets in the ARPA dollars because it would be a, a usable uh, category for ARPA. So if there was a startup into a new program, you know, maybe there's a capital investment that would reduce the ability or the, reduce the necessity for a levy issue. Um, that, that could be an option too.
How about driverless vehicles? Okay. Any other questions? Oh, yes, Randy, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just had a couple things and I just wanted to kind of come back to Councilman Jensen's comment here. Brad did speak to CNPO last, last month, I believe it was Brad, and he, they were talking about some of the things that they have going on down there. They have a facility that is being relocated or expanded and, and I'm sure they're addressing a lot of other things too as far as equipment replacement and, and some of their, I know they're sampling some of the buses on electric and things of that nature. So I know there's a lot going in there, but certainly not an answer to justify the, the proposed increase. The other thing too, I would like to see, I guess, would be the data if we could even if we could just take, I'm shocked to see that our ridership is that low. In my perspective, that seems low and I, maybe I'm misunderstanding that report, but it's somewhere around five hundred stops or, excuse me, five hundred riders per year? Is, is that what we were looking at?
No, no, no. That's, that's daily ridership.
Okay.
That's, that's an average of daily ridership. So we get counts every day, how many, and then you kind of
Okay, gotcha. Perfect. Cause what I was wanting to get to was to drill down to be able to see how many of those on a ridership on a daily basis, Monday through Friday, are, are transits coming in or going out? And then repeating the cycle for drop-offs in the evening. So an AM versus PM pickup, drop-off because I am totally on board with this other process of going back and having our smaller system internally and then growing to a larger transient system in the future because this just makes more sense, right? If we could go run two of our, whatever vehicles that we have to pick up at the transfer station over there at, at the uh, mall, so to speak, and bring them back in, in the same thing with, with people out to Lao Park. I can see where we would have a high demand for that ridership out there for the lunch hour, but it doesn't make sense to run a bus out there all day long when there's nobody dropping off, nobody picking up. It, it just doesn't seem like a viable source of, of means other than to be able to target some of those. And I, this is very exciting and not to say that we would completely remove that, but four hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year or a proposed half million dollars per year certainly would go a long ways in allowing us to utilize a service that would be more on-demand in more functionally highly-used at the spots where we need them. The apps and technology today can, you know, the drivers can see that if I've got five people that need me at the same time, they can, the software will actually show them the route to do the pickups and you can collect them all at once and make one sweep through. So I, I think this is really exciting and I know, you know, for pollution and environment and renewable resources, there's, this could go really a long ways. So I, I, I'm pretty excited to hear about this. This is great. Thank you.
Kind of excited. Just talking about that, I want to expand some more, but for the sake of time, I won't. Um, I'm excited to have Kelsey uh, with Horizons uh, expand on this more. I mean, she, she talks very well about the system and has an answer for, for every, every question we've had so far. For sure. And, and a wealth of detailed knowledge about how it functions in the app and the ability of the app and the, and the user-friendliness of, of actually making an appointment and whatnot. So yes, excited to bring that.
Okay. Anyone else? Thanks, Kesha. Thanks, Tom. Okay. Can I bring us to the end of the agenda? We have a closed session this evening.
Your Honor, I move to adjourn to a closed session regarding litigation as permitted under sections twenty-one point five, number one, letter C of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. Discussion. Okay, uh, we'll have the legal counsel statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five one C.
Thank you. We have the roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abulosli?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Ms. Cadelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. We're adjourned to closed session. Uh, do uh, Renee and Will have a separate link to get into the meeting. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much and we'll see you on Thursday. Are we staying in here, Rachel? We're going